Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Tulliner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Barrigas.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes.
Tonight we have the minutes from the common council meeting of February 20th, 2018.
So moved. Motion by Alderman Massey, second to bye. Oldman Green, all in favor.
Aye.
Correspondence.
Tonight we have a letter from the, to the members of the Board of Estimate from Alex Smith on Planning and Zoning Board Minutes.
Forward to legislation.
We have a letter from the Ag and Marketing for Municipal Shelter Inspection Report.
Received and filed.
And a letter from Frontier Communications on Vantage TV Service Programming Changes Notice.
Received and filed.
Got us all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward, state your name, you have four minutes.
Hi, Mayor Lou Dietrich.
And Pastor Charles View.
We want to thank you all who participated in the March for Our Lives on Saturday, March 24th, it was wonderful. Mayor, we could not have done it without your support in organizing and running this march. Without the city's support, we could have not had the success we had. Other cities and towns could not, would not support such an event. So Middletown really was up front on that one, so thankful. Chief Huanchu and the Middletown Police, your presence was amazing, you were always one step ahead of us. Maria Bruni and the technology people, outstanding. They were able to anticipate our needs before we even knew we needed it. They were phenomenal. Chris Brinkerhoff and the Parks and Recreation Crew, they were, did anything we asked for, set up recycle bins, trash bins, so that the place was as clean, or cleaner when we left. The Middletown School Board, the administration and the teachers for their help and support, and especially for our intelligent, articulate, passionate Middletown students, who have proven they are our future leaders. Thank you.
So thank you, Middletown.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Reed, I live in Middletown. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, members, and the community. The Walkhill Engine Company Number Six hosted a St. Patrick's Day benefit on March 17th. The benefit is a memorial in my brother's name, Bob Beirstow. Bob was a proud lifelong resident of Middletown. He was an avid sports fan and athlete, and this year's recipient of the proceeds, the percentage of the proceeds, is the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department Youth Program Scholarship Fund. The Walkhills along with many generous donors, sponsors, and benefit goers were all instrumental in the great success of this event. I'd like to call up Nelson Reed, Joe Walsh, Lieutenant Artie Batisti, Kevin Duggan, to present the check to the Superintendent of Recs and Parks Department, Christine Brinkerhoff. Thank you.
Chris? Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Walkhill Engine Company Number Six, I'd like to thank everyone for having us here tonight. As of last year, Carol said we started this to not just raise money for the Walkhill Engine Company, but also to give back to the community, which was a big part of my brother-in-law's views of, of working with this youth in our district, or our town, and he always liked to help others whatever he could and within our community. So as of last year, we did it for St. Margaret's Soup Kitchen, this year we wanted to do something back for the youth of the community. So what other better way than to send some kids possibility going to sports camp that they might not be able to go to on their own? So at this time, I'd like to present to Superintendent Chris Brinkerhoff a check for $2,800.
Wow.
And on behalf of the Recreation Department, I want to thank the whole Beirstow family and the Walkhills, because that event was a true community event, it was a great event to be to. Yes, a lot of City Hall workers won prizes, but that means we have a lot of City Hall workers involved in our community, so that's a great thing. So it was a great event, it's a great cause, and this will allow a lot of kids that don't have the opportunity to go to sports camp to go. We work with the nurses, the principals, and the social workers to get those kids in camp for a week, and this helps them tremendously. So thank you to the Walkhills and the Beirstow family.
Thank you.
My name's Alan Stevens, I'm a resident of the town of Way Wehonda, and I too was at the March 8th Town of Way Wehonda Planning Board Meeting, or the Town Board Meeting, where there were some comments that were made about Middletown, but they were a very small percentage of the meeting, and I don't believe it's the way that anybody there truly feels. This is a time where we should be working together, it's all the same air that we breathe. The, at the last meeting, the person, Joe Perkico, or whatever his name is, had already been, found guilty of corruption in planning of the plant and stuff, but that wasn't mentioned at the meeting, it was just all Way Wehonda residents, and I felt that was a try to way to split us up, where we are Middletown, Middletown is probably closer to the plant, the residents that are breathing it, Sutton Hill, all those communities there, and I don't feel myself that it's a plant that should have been put in such a residential area, there should be time for it to dissipate into the air and break down before it gets to people. We have CO2 protectors in our house to stop, so we don't get this much in one area at one time concentrated, and hopefully we won't need CO2 detectors in our yards to know that it's okay to go out and play. But again, I just wanted to say that Way Wehonda is a neighbor of Middletown, we don't have our own shopping malls, we don't have, we all come into Middletown for our things, we all live together, and I believe we respect each other. And the people out there on Saturdays from 11 to 12 that have been protesting the plant and stuff, it's, it's all about their lives, it's, you know, we don't have white signs that we look for protest and fill them out when we get there. And I'm not a public speaker, nor are the people that were speaking at that meeting, we are, we are all residents who, who live there, and I would just like Middletown support in going over the corruption plans and what was actually taking place, and I know Middletown has always said, oh, we're selling them as black water and sewer, but every ounce of fresh water that's gone through there has came from their reservoirs through Way Wehonda, and from what I understand, when the plant goes online, all the fresh water will be coming through Middletown. Those lines were put in next to Route 6 when everything else was put in. So Middletown has been part of this project from the beginning, because they wouldn't build a plant without water. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the common council. It was my goal to be here at 7 o'clock, unfortunately I got stuck in the town of Woodbury Court, and that's history, but I hope to be back here for the vote, and I do commend Alderman Kline for the great hard work on the municipal ID. Well, putting back on the hat of school board liaison, as you all know, during the last few weeks, we've seen a lot of mobilization on our students, where they've been voicing their concerns about safety in the schools and what public office holders should be looking at. March 14th, we had the walkout by our high school students, and what could be commended was very disciplined, organized, there were students who gave speeches, those that were outside, there were students that stayed within the school building, and also with the staff discussed the various issues, different opposing viewpoints, but with a common, common ground of expressing their voice that they wanted, demanding that our schools be safe and sound. And I think there, it's a very promising time period, right now before the state legislature, we see before both the state senate, the state assembly, as well as in the governor's budget, there are, there are issue, proposals and initiatives being raised to secure funding for better security in our schools, and I would say hopefully building a specialty of school security, as well as the other issues that are being debated. And a few weeks ago, we did have Congressman Maloney who spoke at the high school, courtesy of our President John Perino helped arrange for Congressman Maloney to be there, and again, we heard not only the concerns of our local community with respect to improving safety, but at the same time, we, we were able to discuss possible bipartisan legislation in Washington, hopefully it'll get through, we see lately that bipartisanship, it's kind of a little difficult up there, but where there will be issues of public school safety being addressed. So I want to just lift a shout out for our students, because our students show that they have self-respect, they care for the future, and definitely they are role models for the future. And we thank all our elected officials here in the common council, our mayor for, our mayor, council president, all the members for also being vocal in their support for the safety of our kids. That's what I have to say as far as the March 14 walkout and the March 24th rally that we had here in the city. Okay? That's it for today, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Susan Dupue, 57 Prospect Street, the Middletown Pride Committee. Litter has been an ongoing part of my life for the last eight years, it's been a part that I'm trying to tackle, and I'm trying to help Middletown become litter-free. When litter gets beyond what we can control, it can create health problems, it can degrade our city, it can reduce the value of a home's resale value, and I found one amazing statistic. In the United States, litter is growing at the rate of one piece per linear foot of highway. That is a staggering amount, if you just think of how many millions of feet of highway there are in the United States. So there are things that deter people from littering, one might be a fine, one might be the fact that it might degrade their home's value, but what can we as residents of Middletown do? We have a committee that is, that has been in existence since 2011. The mayor, the common council, and the, many of the other elected officials, and attorneys in Middletown have all supported the Middletown Pride Committee, whose primary function is to eradicate litter and to keep litter at bay. So as a resident, my concern is litter, it probably will be the thing that I go down being known for most, other than the fact that I'm a grandmother of a lot of kids. So this evening, I'm asking all of the residents of Middletown to collectively say enough is enough with litter. I don't want to live with litter, I don't want litter to be part of my sidewalk, my driveway, my front yard, or anything near my house. So on Saturday, which is the day before Earth Day, April 21st, the Middletown Pride Committee has set aside three hours where we're asking every resident of Middletown to give us those three hours and help us create a litter-free Middletown. Please join us to eradicate litter, meet at Festival Square, opposite City Hall and the police department. With the financial support of many businesses and local industries, we will be able to accommodate as many people as can come. We thank Middletown businesses, and I'd like to thank City Transit for their continual support to help us with busing. There are three ways you as a resident can help. Come to Festival Square, we will outfit you with a very dashing, bright green neon shirt that says Middletown Pride. You can wear it everywhere, you can wear it that day, but you can also wear it everywhere to say, "I don't want litter in Middletown." You can help the volunteers acknowledge your participation by being there on time. Children are, are welcome, students are welcome, adults and elderly are welcome, we want everybody to show up that day. We will provide you with a shirt, grab, a litter grabber, gloves to protect your hands, and garbage bags for you to collect them. We will give you directions when you arrive as to how to get from here to there. You will be bused if, unless you want to drive. We ask all families to participate and bring children of any age. Children are the future of America, and if we get kids to not allow littering, like I found on my sidewalk today, I went out, when I got back from being at the doctor in New York all day, and this is what I found on my sidewalk. So second part of what I'm asking Middletowners to do is to do something called 10 on Tuesday, and that is, take this bag that you get at the supermarket that you don't know what to do with it, pick up 10 things around your yard every single Tuesday. If everyone who lives in your home gets on that bandwagon, litter will be less in your community, and certainly less in your home and in front of where you live. For those Middletown residents who are unable to attend this, you can do the 10 on Tuesday, but the other thing that you can do is you can go outside your own yard and you can rake, you can pick up the litter, you can paint, you can make your house look like the pride that you want it to be. 10 pieces of litter, doesn't sound like very much, but if everybody picked up this much litter every Tuesday, Middletown would be cleaner. So in addition to the things about the Middletown Pride Committee, the mayor has offered to do the community service award for every student who comes, it's a great way for kids to receive community acknowledgement, and for college or for religious education, or whatever they need. So for the pride of Middletown, please come out and help us, and be proud of Middletown. And we want a sign that says, "Welcome to Middletown, a litter-free community." Thank you very much.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Bob Dietrich, Chestnut Street. In approximately the last eight years, since the last census, a great deal of research was done to try to improve the way we count people in the United States, to make it clearer, okay, which would help all of our communities. In the past week, all that research was summarily rejected. Instead, in its place, a question was suggested to be brought back from the 1950s, where a person's citizenship would be in the census, okay? We haven't done that since the 1950s, early 1950s. As we could see tonight, a question like that would hurt our city, would hurt our state, we need to have all of our residents counted. We depend on it, we depend on it for funding, both the city and the state. Our future depends on this. A great many of our residents, as we could see tonight, as was pointed out by some of the council members, might fear having their census taken. And if that doesn't happen, our city and our state would be in great trouble. So to all individuals, and to the city as a unit, I think that we need to fight this question, and be sure that it isn't included on the 2020 census. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, reported, department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. Just want to let you know that this Saturday, April 7th, at 10:30, from 10:30 noon at Middletown Throw Library Community Room, second floor, Key Bank will be hosting a homeownership workshop, which we're participating in our community development office, and also the Orange County Community Development Office, and Pastone. You know, Pastone is one of our partners in the homeownership program, so we're all going to be there for a couple hours, come by, from 10:30 to noon, we'll be there to talk about all the housing opportunities, from rehab to homeownership, and to grants that are available for folks throughout the county and the city of Middletown, so hope to see you attend on Saturday morning. And also today, we had great new, great economic development project announced, and I'm going to have the mayor talk about that when he's up. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for Maria?
Thank you.
DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. I want to update you about the construction projects that are taking place at this time. Black Dirt Sewer, I've been sending you a report or two with photographs, which we're going to be start, we're going to start putting these photographs on our city website, because the project is quite unique, they include the construction of piles in there, and actually the sewer line will be built on piles, because the support, the soil cannot support the weight of the pipe. And so this is a unique project, so we're going to be, we're going to be showing you those pictures and photographs on our website, city website and DPW website, which is part of it. About 75% of the piles have been installed so far, so we got 25% remaining, and every, every so often, we have to do a test of these piles to make sure that they can carry the load that's going to be superimposed on them during the construction, so there is a verification process. Sterling Street Sewer Project Phase 2, it's winding down, and now we are in the process just finalizing a couple of pieces of pipe on Rusner Avenue, and then we will be doing the surface restoration, and hopefully that will be the end of that project. Maple Avenue Drainage and, and West Main Street Drainage, all the trees have been taken down, some activities has taken place, and we had to meet the deadline of March 31st, so the contracts were signed by the mayor, I believe like a week, week before that, so the contractors, they jumped in and they've done some, quite a bit of work, they took the trees down, and now it's going to be some, a quiet period until they get all the shot drawings approved, so you're going to see some, some pose, posing in the construction, and, but it will resume very shortly. After that, Maple, Maple Avenue Park will be totally closed for the public, for the safety aspect of it, so that the construction project can be completed in an expeditious manner. Roundabout project on County Route 78, if you're driving through there by, just by Sterling Park, and by the pharmacy over there, and Sutton Hill, construction is moving along very well, and again, just please be careful when you're driving in that area, slow down, because there might be some construction workers, there's going to be some detour over there, there's going to be some realignment of the road, so just be very careful, slow down and keep your eyes on the road, please. Mill Pond Water Taking Permit, which is an important part of our water-taking activities, and we have to submit to the DEC, rather substantial application that we are working with CDM, Smith-on, and Jacobs Engineering, and, and that will convert our supplemental water-taking permit for Mill Pond from supplemental one to a permanent one. So we're hoping to make a submittal within a couple of weeks to the DEC, and that will also help move Amy's Kitchen Water Taking Permit along also with the DEC. Reminder, the bulk pickup or the spring cleanup is going to be starting on April 9th, so it's going to be fourth word, third, second, and then first, each word will be taken, will take us one week to clean it up. So please look at, check out our website, and also Channel 20, but set up all the junk that you don't need on April 9th, please, Sunday before April 9th, so every time you do it, I was thinking about what the mayor says about the junk, right?
Junk.
So no TVs, exactly, no electronics, the chairman of DPW Committee is, he's looking into, into electronic pickup date, right, which is going to be hopefully shortly after that, and we're hoping to get some grant from the DEC for the course of the electronic cleanup. I know Alderman Kline has been, has been concerned about that and pushing for it as well. Also, we're going to be doing yard waste pickup, also started this Monday, yesterday, so again, please follow, follow the rules and regulations about how to put the yard waste outside, you cannot dump it into the street, and everything has to be wrapped and in cans and so on, so please be very careful of that. You're going to have, you're going to see an ad in the paper, also on our website, on Channel 20, we're going to be flushing our water distribution system, and that will be starting on April 9th. And check the ad in the paper, please be very careful, once we start flushing in your area, in your neighborhood, be careful before you do any laundry, because that will cause some staining, you have to allow the water to flush out, make sure it's clean before you start doing any laundry or any wash. Recyclable pickup, like the mayor, he did, mayor and the common council has, they have approved that we have to pick up recyclables every week now, whether we have holiday or not, so every week your recyclables are going to be picked up, the only thing is going to be pushed back to Saturday, which means you have to put it out Friday night, the recyclables, if we have a vacation or we have an off day on the, on the previous, on that week. So all that calendar is shown on our website, please, you can click on it, you can find out when Saturday pickup is going to be there. So we urge the community, everyone, please to pitch in and recycle, this is costing us quite a bit of money to go in there on Saturday to pick up the recyclables. Please make it worthwhile, it's good for the environment, it's good for your taxes, and it's, it's the right thing to do. There's River Keepers in, in association with Orange County Soil Conservation, and with support from the city, they will be doing the Manhattan Brook Cleanup, just to follow on what Sue Dupue was saying about April 21st, they're going to be the Pride Cleanup Day for Middletown. On May 5th, is going to be Manhattan Brook Cleanup, is going to take place behind Dollar General, which is off Dulson Avenue. So we urge people from the community from Middletown to come out there and help clean up with the brook, some litter or whatever we can find in there to keep ours, so we can take pride of our brook, so it's not going to be, hopefully it's not going to be all outside people coming from River Keepers, and, and so on, hopefully it's going to be, the sons and daughters of Middletown will come out and do the cleaning as well. The 20, the 20-inch water main project, also it's, it's moving along now, the design has started, and that would replace an early 1900 water main from the water treatment plant all the way down Manhattan Avenue up to the former psychiatric center or Middletown Community Center. So that project, the design has started, Woolworth Building, the construction is moving on, it was a little bit slow during the, because of the weather, and, but hopefully now it will pick up, once we start having better weather, for a target completion date in July, July, August, hopefully. Other DOT projects, there's quite a few of them, I will report to you next time, once I have better news to report to you.
Take a breath.
Yeah, and the mayor is going to be reporting on some other construction projects, so I don't, do you have any questions for me?
Aldwin Tobin?
I know we suspended the overnight parking regulations this weekend for the holiday, and I know we had snow, how was it, did you find plowing around the cars, was it difficult, or was there any problems?
When we started the plowing, it was really 6:30 in the morning, so by then, that suspension would have been gone and...
Oh, okay, so it wasn't a big deal plowing around the cars?
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a good, it wasn't a good test for that.
All right.
Aspect of it, yeah. We started 6 o'clock in the morning, and 6:30 rather, and we, we had good five, six inches of snow, I believe, it was a bit that came down fast, but yeah, no.
Jacob, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The Black Dirt, the railroad, it's, I guess they removed part of it, of the railroad?
Yes.
Are they going to put it back?
Yes, we're going to, actually, we're going to go take, yes, by contract, they have to put it back.
Okay.
But we're going to take a walk over there and see if, if... But we're going to take a walk over there and see if, if anything we can do to improve the area in there, so we will do it. So, that's between the mayor and you guys, we'll have to, we'll have to, uh, debate that, but, uh, for now, they have to put it back.
Can you give me a, um, an update on New York Rising, the Janong Street Project? I know I asked Mr. Massey to bring it up last time.
Yes. I, I did the brief, uh, update last, last week, and now the mayor is gonna be, no, no, that's all, it's up to you.
You do it, Joe.
Huh? The mayor was gonna do that, I'll, I'm taking, the mayor will not...
I'll talk less.
Well, the mayor's not gonna have too much to, uh, well, he always has too much to talk about, of course, but...
Oh.
No, I mean, in a good way, in a good way. In a good way, mayor.
He's slapping him.
In a good way, to brag about the progress of the city, of course. That's what I'm doing here.
Bragging the mayor.
What else am I doing here? So, uh, the New York Rising in there, uh, we're gonna have a couple of audits coming for, to audit our, our books, uh, and, and, um, I believe it's April ninth or something like that, which is, which is, uh, which is great, they just wanna make sure that we are prepared and all our paperwork is in order. As far as, as the design and the engineering, uh, we met with the engineers a few times, they are finalizing the target list of what projects needs to be done right now, and they are associating scoring points to each project that they are proposing. As an example, everybody's talking about daylighting the brook in there, which the DEC is very interested in daylighting the brook between, uh, Academy Avenue and Janong Street, everybody's looking forward to that, if it's doable. That's one of the projects. There are several other projects in there, we don't have that much money, uh, available, so by the end of May, middle to the end of May, we're gonna have a list from them, an actionable list that we can choose, pick and choose, and they will meet with you, uh, with all of you, of course, and, and the mayor, and then we will evaluate which project is better off, which will give us better, more, more value for our dollar, because we don't have, you know, three and a half million dollars by the time you do the engineering and the design and the measurement and all that stuff, you, you have, you know, only possibly, uh...
A few dollars?
Huh? No, about two and a half million dollars left for the construction. Now, we're working with this NV5 in there, there's another grant application that is due by the middle of April. We're working with them to try to find out if we can get more culverts replaced within the city of Middletown under the new grant application that we will be filling out, which New York, I believe it's called New York Bridge or something to that effect. Um, so, we're working with them on that too. So, we're trying to grab, get more money and more, more grants, but we are on schedule with this project. So, May, middle of May, end of May, we're gonna have that target list in there with actionable items in there, where, that we can pick and choose which project we wanna proceed with. After that, they will start with the design, and I believe we have to be completed by, I don't know if the number is here, two thousand...
Nineteen?
Two thousand nineteen, the construction begins.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is the number, yeah.
I think what you said last, last.
Yes, two thousand twenty-two, I haven't had the chance to review this email lately, but that's, I believe that's what it is, construction, yes. September two thousand and twenty-two, construction has to be completed. Alderman Massey remembers that.
All right, um, another question, the roundabout on County Route Seventy-eight, the construction started?
Ye- yes, sir.
What's the timeframe for the construction?
I don't have that, uh, off, off the top of my head, I'm sorry, I have to...
Three months or even longer?
No, no, it's gotta be towards, uh, August, I believe, but don't, don't, don't quote me on that, I don't, I did not review that before my meeting, but, I don't have that number, but...
All right. Anyone else? Alvin Tobin?
Yes, sir.
You're about to rip up that culvert that was there, with, how much feet are we talking about when you daylight of some of these, the backyards there that would have to be taken out?
That remains to be determined, that's gonna be part of the final design, but it's gonna be quite a few, I mean, quite, quite a bit. The idea is for this area, should you decide to daylight that section of the brook, it's gonna invite more recreational, it's gonna be more, uh, recreational area in there, that area which is subject to flooding right now, it would be a natural detention in there, it will be designed, if there's a peaks, you know, really intensive storm coming in there, that area could be subject to flooding without serious damage being impo- being, um, uh, done to the infrastructure or to the houses around it, like what happens right now, which is when they get flooded, uh, so that's, it has several advantages, and it improves the quality of life for the whole area and so on. But that's, n- nothing has been determined yet, but like I said, the DEC is very interested in, in that, and they favor, I believe they favor it.
Recreation's not rafting down, you know, during a snowstorm, a rainstorm, right?
Hopefully not, yeah.
Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
Fire chief.
Uh, just wanna let everybody know that to date, we have two hundred and sixty-five alarms. What are you laughing at? Um, nothing really major's happening, uh, right now, had one small fire Sunday morning, quick response, quick extinguishment.
Any questions for the fire chief? Thank you, Alvin Burr.
Thanks. We are interviewing for new firemen? How's that going?
Um, unfortunately, that's happening when I'm at my regular job, so I've...
So, you're not in the...
I was not able to attend, so, but I'm hearing that it's going very well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Police chief. Trying to hide.
Good evening. I have nothing unless you have questions for me this evening.
Any questions for the police chief? Thank you, chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Uh, earlier, we talked about the nice, uh, contribution that we're getting from the Beirstow family and the Walk Hills Engine Company to sponsor kids. Um, sports camp is back this year. Uh, last year, we did not have it due to all the construction in the schools. Sports camp will be held again at Manhattan Middle School. Uh, we have now added an extra week, it is six weeks. We have also added a perk where lunch will also be given to, is part of the, part of the camp. So, uh, sports camp is back, please spread the word, uh, our hardest thing is getting that marketed out to everybody, even using social media, it's hard to, to inform everybody, so let people know that. Uh, speaking of summer as well, uh, this is the time for teenagers to come in and put applications in for summer employment. We are hiring now for our playgrounds, our lifeguards, our pools, our maintenance, um, and our camps, so this is the time. It is also the time for parents to come and register. All of our summer registration is out. Uh, our brochure will hopefully be out, uh, at the very end of April, and we'll make sure everybody gets that. And, uh, last thing I wanna touch on is we are getting, Jacob mentioned it, uh, the project that's going through Maple Hill Park, a lot of residents have called. Um, the entire park will not be closed, we are still renting the Kiwanis Shelter, which is up across from the tennis courts. Uh, the tennis courts will still be open. Uh, we're glad to see the project starting early, so we're hoping it's kinda done, almost done come summer. If it's not, we will still have the lunch program, we will serve from the pool area instead of the playground area. And you're also gonna see the very end of May, once the weather stays warm in the evening, we're gonna be reservicing the tennis courts, we've had some questions with that, and two of the courts will be not only tennis, but they'll be marked for pickleball. Uh, we've had some questions about that, actually Jeff Berkman has asked us about that, and, uh, that is, uh, a big sport coming down, especially with retirees, that's, uh, what they play. So, two of our courts will, will have pickleball on it as well. And that's all, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions? Alvin Kleiner?
Yeah, can you give a quick report on the Easter egg hunt and the turnout such?
Yeah. The Easter egg hunt was Saturday at Davidge, uh, it was nice weather, uh, we estimated between six hundred to eight hundred people there. It was packed, uh, we're gonna have to get more plastic eggs, uh, we wanna thank the mayor's youth council and the junior ROTC, without them, it is just not possible. Uh, I also like to thank a lot of members of the Lions Club and residents, there was a hundred and twenty-five rabbits, Lions Club Chocolate Rabbits donated to that hunt, so a hundred and twenty-five kids went home with finding special eggs. So, it's a great community event, um, if we could keep a couple of parents in check, it'd be even better, but the kids love it.
Anyone else?
Chris, I just got a quick, um, question, the dog park, it's very, very muddy up there.
Yes.
Is there anything we can do about the do, like putting mulch or something now?
We, we do have some peystone around that one area, but right now, it's ju, the, the maximum use up there is crazy, and it's just with the snow and the frost coming out of the ground. Uh, what we've done in the past, when it got real bad, is just lock the gates for like a week, just to give the ground time to settle, and I'll, I'll speak to, uh...
It was even in the summertime, I have three dogs, and even in the summertime...
Yeah, we are, we are gonna be checking, um, we think there's water coming from underground, one of the pipes that leads to that fountain, and we'll, as soon as the water's turned on, 'cause right now, it's not even on, so we know it's not coming from that, so we think it's mostly, but that's gonna be followed up and checked.
And, and the school board promised us one day in two thousand and six that we will be back with sports camp at the high school. There's no more construction at the high school, why can't we have...
Uh, they're gonna be, they're, they're running other camps there, uh, that are paying revenue, there's big camps that are being held there that's bringing in revenue with that new facility, and, uh, we are not charged by the school district, they work in collaboration with us, because they also use our facilities, like their JV baseball, and their practices are using our facilities as well. And it's not off the table, it definitely was discussed at length.
Well, hopefully, we all get the message, and we wanna back, our kids need it.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
City clerk?
Tonight, I just wanted to go over a couple of the events that are happening that, that will cause some road closures, please check the website. The first one will be the Little League Parade, which is April fourteenth, and then a few of the other ones that are coming up, I'll make sure we put them on the website, and that's the Memorial Day Parade, which is gonna be May twenty-eighth. The Ruthie Dino Run with YMCA is gonna be June tenth, and then the Classic Ten K is gonna be June third, and we'll also make sure that we'll get Nixel messages out to everyone about that for those road closures, but please check the website on there, and I will attach the maps for the street closures on those too, and that's all I have for tonight.
Questions for John? Corporation Council?
Nothing unless you have questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Richard. Uh, Joel Sierra, our county legislator.
I'm sorry, I missed my chance when you said for the good of the city. Joel Sierra, Orange County Legislator, District Twenty. Um, I just wanted to commend the mayor and all of you guys for all your hard work with this municipal ID that you're working on. Um, I think it's a great idea for our community, so however I can help out, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, most of you know, know how to get ahold of me, but, um, I just wanted, uh, wish my support with this. Uh, for the, um, student safety, uh, I know, uh, the school board liaison spoke on it, I know the mayor has been a big proponent for it, so has the police chief. Uh, we do have a resol- a resolution on Friday in front of the legislature to help lobby the state, um, to put SROs in all the schools and throughout the state, so that's coming up on Friday. Uh, Friday is our Youth in Government Day, it starts at nine o'clock. Um, I believe there's seven students from Middletown that will be there, you're more than all, all welcome to attend. Um, it's, like I said, it's at nine o'clock starts the, uh, the student session, so I best, they're having a bunch of students, uh, give a legislative session, and then , uh, ten o'clock is the, uh, regular session. Also, the Heritage Trail, I know the mayor's been meeting with a couple county officials, he'll give you an update on that, but they are moving forward on the Heritage Trail project, and that's all I have for this evening, unless you guys got questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Um, I'd like to begin by thanking the, uh, the Beirstow family for not only organizing once again, but, uh, running and the donation to the city of Middletown, you know, um, uh, today is also the anniversary of the passing of Robert Isick's, former city attorney and, and just the, uh, city court judge, and to have these two guys, Bob Beirstow and, and Bob Isick's, you know, right around this time is, uh, shows you what kinda community, um, their, their legacy in the community, the families, and, and what they're, uh, contributing even after the passing of, of their loved ones here. So, I wanted to thank all the Beirstows, I didn't hear about the, who did the Irish jig at the event, but I hear Mary Beirstow Zohorchik, um, did play a big role in whatever happened there, so I wanted to thank her. But, um, the March for Our Lives, uh, was a successful event, uh, I wanna thank the organizers and, uh, and the students who participated, that's who it was about, it was, uh, uh, some tremendous powerful speakers, and whether you agree with the issue or not, I think everyone can agree that, um, students have found their voice on this issue throughout our country, and, um, whether people listen to it or not is a different story, but, um, at least in Middletown, we had an awful lot of people listening, um, this past Saturday. And the organizers deserve a lot of credit, um, for putting the, this whole thing together on a very short notice. Uh, Orange County Community College also participated, uh, with us, and, um, I wanna thank, uh, thank everyone involved at the college also for, um, allowing us to set up there and, and as the, as a takeoff point. Uh, Alderman Burr asked about fire interviews, we have interviewed over the past two weeks about thirteen or fourteen applicants, all excellent applicants. Um, we have two, um, maybe three, um, vacancies, uh, we, we actually have two budgeted vacancies. I may be coming back to the common council to ask to fill another one, because we anticipate another retirement this year, and the academy is only offered so often, so we might put a third person into the academy out of this group of interviews, but, um, we're hoping to make a decision tomorrow, a final decision on the hirees, but I think you'll be very pleased with, um, uh, with the quality of people that have applied, and, and remember, all people under this, um, um, the Middletown, uh, Fire Department hiring because of our contract negotiations will now be city of Middletown residents, and that's important, that, um, and when we asked the question, we let them know that, uh, we, we did have one person who, who, um, said he, he didn't think he would, um, wanna do that, so, uh, we said, well, there's really no sense in interviewing you then, if you're not going to move here, he thought, he thought he'd have a special circumstance, but the other group, um, very enthusiastic, some of them Middletown residents now, some active in the, um, in the Fire Department for many, many years, and, and, uh, basically all very good people, and I think it'll be, uh, will do you proud when we, when we make the selections. Um, the Heritage Trail update, um, Jacob and I have been meeting with, and Rich Curtin, with the county, and there's still one little hiccup on the trail, and that is the culvert out by Janong Street that keeps backing up, uh, we're hoping to have it resolved, uh, with the county and, uh, and it's, um, uh, we had our last meeting about two weeks ago, so, uh, the, you know, I plan on having a meeting with Alderman, on Alderman Sierra, with the county legislator Sierra, to give him an update on, um, where our concerns are, um, about this culvert situation, but, uh, I don't think it's gonna delay anything, the, they're scheduled to go out the bit, I think sometime in April, and possibly begin construction sixty days after that. So, uh, we're hoping to get some more updates from the county as to what the status is, but, um, our last meeting, we felt the county executive pretty, had a pretty good grasp of the issue, it's just getting some, uh, finality on it, on which way they're gonna go. Uh, Mr. Henry spoke on the CPV, and I was agreeing with him for a while there, but, um, we do all breathe the same air, and, um, and some of the comments, I'm glad he's the first person to acknowledge, uh, that some of those comments made it way beyond, uh, were inappropriate comments about Middletown and, and Newburgh, uh, but, uh, the words are very powerful when people say words like that, and, um, so they were very hurtful, but, uh, in no way, um, altered our thinking about, uh, how we're moving ahead proceeding with CPV. Um, I distributed to some members of the council, and will make available to the press today, and I believe it's posted on the, um, DEC website already, the air emissions, uh, test, the fact sheet, from, uh, the air tests that were, air quality tests that were done by the Department of Environmental Conservation, and it's a two-page document, or a three-page document. Uh, basically, in their testing, they indicated nothing that's out of, uh, any danger or above any kind of standard that, um, uh, would make people, you know, have any kinda concern at this point. Our, um, engineer, CDM, Cynthia Hibbard, uh, she wrote to the DEC, and I'll read that letter, it's pretty brief. "George, thank you very much, I appreciate you sending both the sampling results and the analysis. It is good to see that the downwind concentrations are well below the SGCs. Do you know what time of day the samples were collected? How did the DEC selected the block road locations? Could they smell diesel odor at these locations?" She goes, "I note that formaldehyde and except, except, acetylehide are not part on the list. Does your lab have thoughts on how to sample for these aldehydes? I appreciate the lab's estimating the acrylon concentrations. The write-up mentions a comparison with concentrations found in the rest of the DEC's monitoring network, and could you send us these as well? And do you have plans to conduct additional sampling? It would be ideal if sampling could be conducted during one of the CTG startups." And it was signed by Cynthia. Basically, is, um, as we committed, that Middletown hired the engineering company to monitor what is happening there, they're doing that... They're doing that. Uh, we're gonna make the results public. We were disappointed in the township's response, uh, both Town of Waukeah, Town of Wayyanda, disappointed that there were conversations that after offers made by the city to share services of the engineer with the surrounding townships, that we thought we could have some cooperative efforts. I don't know what Wayyanda's doing. I don't know what Waukeah is doing or, or Goshen's doing. I know they're passing resolutions, uh, but they're not putting any money up. And so we'll make a decision as we move forward to whether the testing will be done downwind or within the city limits only, but, um, it, it's kind of, uh, kind of foolish to have, um, many communities duplicating the same service when you can share in that cost and probably get a lot more done. But, uh, we'll continue to have that dialogue, uh, with the other communities to see if there's any opportunity to convince them that we can all share in the cost and have much more extensive, um, air sampling. But so far, the results are positive. The, um, in, in the sense that there's nothing dangerous in the air at this point. Um, the catalyst converters were put in, the pollution control devices have been installed, the, um, uh, CPV is, uh, still running on sulfur when they do run. Uh, the DEC is still present when they do run, so we're hoping to have more air sampling results from them. And we're gonna continue to have our relationship with CDM as long as it is necessary. Um, there was mention of the census. You know, we, we did a pretty good job ten years ago in counting people and, uh, we're, we've already assigned Caitlin McNamara in the Economic Development Office. She's handling the communication with the census, um, people. And the question could be damaging, uh, not only to access to money, but then also congressional representation for New York State. Um, there is a movement nationwide now, you know, Texas is facing the same problems, uh, Oklahoma and Florida where, um, the undocumented count, um, is, plays significant role in representation in those states also. So they're hoping for some, uh, uh, support from these other states that would, uh, really do away with, uh, what is Trump's real anger at the Northeast and, uh, trying to hurt the, uh, the, the blue states. There's no question about that. So we're, uh, we're hoping that's not going to end up there, but we need to be prepared if it is to help and count as many people as possible. The, um, tonight, uh, we had a, a good meeting here. Jerry, I want to commend you for, uh, running the committee meeting and inviting the members of the community for the residency ID. And we hope we put to get, to bed the idea that this is a, um, uh, a program to provide identification for only undocumented, uh, people. This is a program that is to, uh, that many communities are doing to establish pride in the community, uh, to offer everyone an opportunity to have a residency ID, uh, to pay pavilion rates, in-city rates for recreational programs. Um, communities use it for a variety of different things and, um, you know, everything we do has a positive and a negative to each individual. Um, and whether this is a duplication or of other services really doesn't matter because it's just an extra service that we can offer. Uh, we offer so many recreational programs and some people just don't have access to identification, whether they don't drive, um, they don't, um, have the, um, the ability to get down to motor vehicles or to whatever, um, whatever, whatever the reasons are, communities are offering these types of IDs and I think we're gonna be at the forefront in this area, uh, in this community area. Some gentleman was here from Warwick, um, who's examining what Middletown's going to do. Uh, Moorestown, New Jersey has a very successful program. Uh, the program over time will be self-paying, uh, whatever capital monies we have to put up upfront, um, will be re, uh, reestablished back by the payment of the small fee for the, for the cards, but I think everyone's entitled to have their identification, uh, an ID card for the city of Middletown. We're hoping the library will allow service at the library based on that card and possibly Mr. Gomez voiced some support from the school board. Maybe the school board can get involved some way where one gentleman talked about his experience in menacing schools where he was unable to pick up his child because he didn't have an appropriate ID. So, uh, hopefully it'll expand out from beyond Middletown, uh, but, um, if it doesn't, at least we took the, uh, the first steps, at least in this area, and, um, and doing a positive thing for, um, all of our residents. And it's not, um, it's a program that we're hoping that all residents will participate in, not just people who, um, who you feel or somebody might feel is, um, getting an ID card for undocumented, because they're undocumented. Uh, I think, uh, I think I've covered everything I wanted to.
No, you didn't.
I didn't?
TD Bank and...
Oh, jeez, the biggest news of the day. I forgot Maria. Maria, come on up here with your board.
Wow.
Thank you, Mr. Massey.
Well, I don't want to thank Mr. Massey, but we had a press conference today. And I'm looking for the press conference. Thought you gave me Maria. Well, we'll have to talk about it without reading from it.
You heard it twice.
Huh?
You had it twice.
We had it twice, yeah. I had a coughing spell for the first four minutes, so we had to restart it. Yeah. The, um...
Did you have any water?
I do. The common council, um, has been, uh, briefed on this over the past several weeks. Equilibrium Brewery, one of our great success stories in downtown, located right behind City Hall. Um, they opened in two thousand sixteen. They are so busy brewing beer that, um, they needed to expand. Um, they were looking at a property in downtown, that deal fell through. Um, they were almost forced to go out of town. Maria saved the project, um, working with Ricardo and Peter Oats from, from Equilibrium. Uh, we have TD Bank and, uh, TD Bank will be the second home of Equilibrium Brewery in the downtown area. Uh, this is just a rendering, just for purposes of, uh, showing it, uh, what it could be, but, uh, they'll be doing brewing, they'll be doing tap room, they'll be doing tasting rooms and, uh, sampling rooms and all kinds of rooms, uh, but they'll also be brewing beer at the site. Um, as you know, the Equilibrium came in with a, uh, regional economic development grant through, uh, through Governor Cuomo's initiatives on the, uh, the brewery trails concept. Um, it's been successful here in Middletown for sure and we're selling the property for five hundred thousand dollars plus, well, actually six hundred and fifty thousand, less a hundred and fifty thousand dollar development goal. We bought the property, including all the vacant land for, uh, five hundred thousand. The vacant land will be retained by the city for the purposes of public parking, for public events like Paramount and customers of the Equilibrium Brewery. So it's, it's a great project. They expect to double their employment from about fifteen full-time now to, uh, add at least fifteen within the next year and possibly more, depending on how quickly they get up and running. But, uh, this is an excellent opportunity for the city to once again show off the, um, uh, the, our community with the six, seven, eight hundred people that are lined up here from five o'clock in the morning on a Saturday morning to, and also participated in the March for Our Lives. They didn't know that everybody was marching there, but they were able to participate a little bit because it was right next to each other. So we, um, so we welcome and I want to thank the, uh, Equilibrium people for, um, having that confidence in the city. Uh, they talked about their confidence in city government and the ability to make things happen, um, but it's, you know, we're just voting on something and selling something. They're actually putting up, this will be well over a five million dollar investment between the two, uh, between the two places. And so, uh, they've made a significant investment here and I want to thank them and wish them the best, but, um, and also give Maria in the Economic Development Office, Caitlin and Patty Racine, uh, some credit for, uh, saving the project that we thought was dead for a while. So, thank you, Maria, and thank you to, uh, Peter and Ricardo. Any other questions? Did I forget anything else, Mr. Massey? Or should I ask Jacob? If I could talk anymore?
You outdid him.
Yeah.
No, no, Dr. Jacob, leave him alone. Let him go sit down.
Oh, yeah, I need to correct that, 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 Mr. Henry's comments about the CPV. We, we are not providing fresh water to CPV for the purposes of the plant operation. Uh, maybe their offices and their, um, and their toilets are hooked up to the city. It's minimal amount of, um, uh, water. The gray water is what we're selling to CPV. It's inaccurate when they say that without city water or the city water deal, that the plant would not have been built. So in order for us to have a, really a serious discussion with the people from Wayyanda, they need to get off that railroad track of saying the same thing, the same lie over and over and over, that without Middletown's participation in selling treated sewage, that this project would not be there. What I'm saying to the people of Wayyanda is that without Middletown's participation, CPV would be sucking all of your groundwater away from that aquifer that runs right very closely to there. So we made the project greener. Wayyanda is Wayyanda. It's not in the city of Middletown. So you have an obligation to go to your town board, you have an obligation to go to them and say, why aren't you signed up with CDM or some other engineer? Why aren't you doing air monitoring? Why did you change the zoning on the property? Why did you take all of these local actions that you took in order to bring this project here that is now so unwelcome by many, many residents? Those weren't Middletown actions. So get off the railroad track about pointing a finger here at Middletown. You want to point the finger at anybody else, pointing at anybody else. But even the Prokoko conviction, Prokoko was hired to deliver what was called the power purchase agreement. That was the so-called solicitation of the bribe. They never got the power purchase agreement. So the approval process is a separate process that is, CDM has been reviewing permits along with others, but what Prokoko was hired by CPV to do, they never got from the state of New York. So they want to focus on the air, they want to focus on the environment, they want to focus on the action. That project is here because Wayyanda wanted it there, not because Middletown wanted it there. And if you want to have a conversation and a cooperation about saving, about testing air, about reviewing permits, I'm all for it. But if you're gonna come here and keep repeating the lies, I'm not going to be all for it. You're going to, you have to admit that Middletown had nothing to do with the zoning change. Uh, there were some type of burial ground protections that Wayyanda, Wayyanda had in place. They changed that law. There, uh, they, they made so many accommodations to welcome this plant and then they come here and say, it's all Middletown's fault and if this plant is now gonna be built, only the people from Middletown and Newburgh are gonna want to live here and go to our schools. What the hell does that mean? So they need to really tighten up on their words and what they're saying because words hurt, words are important, and words have consequences. We're willing to work with them, we're willing to continue the dialogue with them, but if they're gonna come and they want to have a cooperative conversation, stop the nonsense, pointing the finger at Middletown, go to your own town board, ask John Rosano, who I haven't heard from once during this whole process, not one time from the supervisor of the Town of Wayyanda regarding this issue. The only people I've heard from were, uh, Dave Cole, a councilman who came to the meeting, and Denise Quinn, who had called. And Ron Muruski, I'm sorry. So the three board members. Haven't heard a word from the supervisor. What are they doing? He talked to Waukeah, they talked to Goshen, and they send their people here to Middletown to complain about Middletown, uh, making this project work. You changed the zoning, you changed the laws, you approved the environmental findings, you did all these things. We made your project greener. And, and so that, hopefully the dialogue will change and people will realize that, um, Wayyanda is Wayyanda, Middletown is Middletown. We didn't approve your project, we didn't make it happen, we made it greener, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Thank you. Ignacio, thank you for organizing and bringing in the group that you brought in. It was nice to see the chambers full. Uh, I know I got to speak to you after the, uh, meeting. Jerry, thank you for having the meeting on the municipal IDs. I addressed a couple of points, asked a couple of questions, was somewhat concerned on how it was going to be received. Uh, after the meeting, I went out to the public and I want to say, I want to, I want to thank everyone that was there. They all took it the way it was meant, that it was positive, that the question had to be asked and that there wasn't one negative from anyone in your group. So I, I truly appreciate the respect that they gave and I think, uh, when it comes time to vote for this and assuming that it passes and it's implemented, prior to that, the biggest thing is going to be education. If we educate everyone, then I think the one concern that I had for you, not for me, but for you, uh, will be answered. So I want to thank you for what you did and I know you asked me, uh, you were sorry that the question wasn't asked on television so that it would go out to more of your community and, and everyone would understand. Uh, and I did tell you, when it does come up for a vote, I will ask that question and hopefully you'll be able to answer it and we can get that educational process begun. Other than that, thank you.
Aldman Tobin?
A few things. I'd like to thank Jerry and Ignacio for the coming and showing the community support and holding the meeting. Uh, there's a lot of questions. We've been talking about some of the things that you've been mentioning before and, uh, there's a lot of details that have to be got, we have to get right. And I know Jerry's making sure that we, we hit all those points and that we have a good product at the end, so thank you for being so thorough. I know it's not gonna be overnight because government doesn't work that quickly, but we're gonna make sure we get it right. Uh, I'd like to thank Maria and the mayor for the hard work they did on the, uh, on the economic, economic development team on TD Bank. It sounds like a real win-win. We got the parking and for about the same amount of, same price, we're selling the building and we're bringing this great, uh, economic engine over to, uh, my side of town, the fourth ward there, but downtown. Uh, they'll bring a lot of foot traffic and it's a real win-win for the city. Uh, I'd like to thank the, uh, Park and Rec, uh, Park and Rec for putting on a great Easter egg hunt. It was a great day, it was out in the park, got some fresh air, we're running around. My kids enjoyed looking for the eggs. Afterwards, we even took a hiker on the park and down the nature trail, which was really nice and I got to see the, the wetlands behind there and some of those birds we've been talking about, so that was really nice. I'm glad to see the weekly recycling, uh, uh, on Saturday took off. Uh, and I, I know some people weren't sure that it was, uh, actually happening, uh, but I'm glad to see that we're starting this weekly recycling. It's a great effort, it's gonna save us money in the long room, a long run. Every, every, uh, all the recycling that we're not putting in a landfill is saving us money and, uh, and also making our, like, like we said before, community nicer. Uh, I'm also looking forward to the citywide cleanup. I bring my kids, that we get involved, I do with the Lions Club as well. It's a great opportunity to show our pride and really, uh, you know, clean up our community and do some community service. Uh, and I know Jude's probably gonna mention too, reminder, bulk pickup is this weekend. It starts off in the fourth ward, so everything should go out on Sunday and no TVs like Jerry mentioned. Thank you.
Aldman Green?
Thank you. I'd also thank you to everyone who came out tonight. It was an amazing showing, uh, something I didn't truly expect was, uh, gonna happen here. Um, so I was really happy to see everyone come out. This is a process that's gonna take a little time, a lot of fact-finding, a lot of, uh, questions still to be asked, but I hope we can get things like the library and the school district on board for that because I think those are key, uh, key items for that. Uh, March for Our Lives, thank you to everyone who came out, to the organizers. It was phenomenal, uh, to see everyone out together, uh, again, doing all that amazing. The speakers were just phenomenal. They blew me away, especially when you learned what grades they were in. I mean, I just, wow. It's the only word you can use. Equilibrium, that's wonderful that they're gonna move into the second location. Um, I was able to be there today for the presentation and the, uh, press conference. This was really nice to hear from, uh, everyone there. Um, and also on, uh, this coming Monday, April ninth, at seven PM here in the council chambers, will be the second board constituents meeting. Uh, we hope everyone can make it out. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
Well, I too will support the, uh, the ID card initiative. I think there's lots of points of clarification. Uh, I think some of the comments by the speakers at the committee meeting elucidated the fact that there's certainly a lot to be understood as what the card will do or not do, but I think it's a good step forward. Uh, as far as sports camp, I congratulate you, it's back in business, it's expanded. Uh, the venue question notwithstanding, but I'm glad to see it's, it's a really important part of what the kids do this summer. I just wanted to call attention to the fact the first resolution on this agenda is for the TNR program. I've discussed it on and off over the years. I want to thank the chief and ACO Maris and also Ms. Stewart, who's seated in the audience view, just stand up so they could see the face behind the name. Thank you very much. Uh, and also, uh, Mr. Gerton. Uh, this project started about three or four years ago, was under the auspices of a variety of organizations. Um, Ms. Stewart formed her organization and basically worked on her own for twenty seventeen. I do a little bit of the work on the side, uh, but the fact that the city's supporting the initiative, I think it's a really good program and it really helps various neighborhoods that are afflicted by unwanted cats. And lastly, I'm a receipt of a correspondence from a business owner who wanted to address some parking issues in downtown and maybe... some parking issues in downtown and maybe changing some regulations, and I will forward that to the DPW committee and to the commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Aldman Cassoon?
Good evening. I also just wanted to say thank you to our members of our community who came out tonight. It was, it was pretty eye-opening for me, you know, you, to hear it from your own, your own voices, what your experience truly is. And, you know, like you said, from our side of the picture, I can't imagine living under that weight. So to have you come out here and explain that, and to feel that something as simple as doing a program like this can help you to feel included in our community, I think it's powerful and important. And, you know, every single one of you matter. You're a part of Middletown, you're what make us a really vibrant and diverse community. So I feel, from what I've seen tonight, that this carries the weight, the support of this entire council. I don't see anybody feeling that this is a bad move. And if this is what we can do to help you to feel ownership and inclusiveness in Middletown, and to feel that you're valued, then I 100% support this, and I'm thankful for you, and I really appreciate the courage that it took for those of you to come out who would not. So thank you to you. To the youth of Middletown, I just want you kids to know that you're going to change the world. I was unable to attend, I was doing my swim mom thing out of town, but I was able to see and, and see video and live streaming and everything else about this march that took place. And I'm especially proud of the fact that so many of those speakers are kids that I have watched grow up and that I have known so well, and I am so incredibly proud of every single one of them, and for the walkout and that march. And I just, I want you guys to know that you're going to make us all so very proud, and to keep on doing what you're doing, and we support you. And then, speaking of our youth, I look forward to seeing all of you on the 21st at cleanup, as you take ownership of your city in that vein as well. So also, the Little League Parade, you know, even if your kids aren't in Little League, I recommend that people go out, that our community come out and see our kids as they march down the street, and this is, it's been a big part of Middletown for a long time. And I'm proud of those kids and the way they played with each other, and usually it's the kids who are showing the parents how to, how to behave, and I'm proud of them as well. So just on the business end, the Neighborhood Watch meeting will take place next Tuesday in this very chambers at 7:00 PM. Have a great week.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. As you've heard, we had a communications committee meeting tonight. And I thank everyone. I thank everyone for coming out and for helping to bring the community support, and we'll, we did vote to move forward to craft the legislation. So we will be doing this as quickly as we can. As we've said often, we want to get it right the first time. So we get back to you as soon as we have anything specific. And most certainly, I thank Nobody Leaves Men Hudson, Jonathan, Ignacio, and everyone for coming out, and particularly for filling the room up. It was really great to see, and I hope we do it again. The March For Our Lives, I kind of call it a march for common sense, which has been lacking in the issue. And I want to thank the mayor and the rest of the council, and the Middletown Police Department for the support. It really made it work well. And thank Mary Lou and Charles Rue and the St. Pauls, and especially the students who spoke so passionately. And people did remind them, vote. When you're old enough, vote. That's where it's going to make a difference, so carry it through. Sue, thank you. We'll see you Saturday, April 21st, 9:00 AM, Festival Square. We hope to have a great turnout. It's just a wonderful Middletown Pride Day, and I still like your idea of 10 on Tuesday. We need to get that word out, too, the best we can. This Thursday will be the Warming Station Send-Off Potluck Dinner in recognition. That's at St. Paul's at 6:00 PM. And we have with us tonight, we had both members of the Warming Station Committee. Dave Beckel was here, he had to leave, but Marilyn Pierce, if you don't know her, Marilyn, please raise your hand and wave. She is the reason we have a Warming Station above and beyond, so that from the middle of November through April 5th, people, every single night, have volunteers and a meal in a place, safe place to sleep. So we really thank you for that. The Equilibrium Brewery, that's a wonderful announcement, and we're very happy for the success. They are, I can tell you, the mayor mentioned that it's the anniversary of Robert Isaac's passing, and the late Robert Isaac told me that MC Squared was the best beer he had ever had. And, and so I knew then Equilibrium was going to be a success. So it's, it's been wonderful for Middletown, and I just wish them all the luck in the world. And also, on, when, when you leave the cleanup on Saturday, later that evening, the Middletown Fire Police, they have their yearly oldie show. Doors open at 6:00, the show starts at 7:00, and they have Adam and the New Hearts, and they have the Caprice, and people my age and near it, I won't say exactly what that is, but will remember there's a Moon Out tonight. I have about eight other Caprice records. They were wonderful, so I think it should really be a good show. And it supports the Middletown Fire Police, so that's the best reason to do it. And finally, we had a wonderful Easter message from our president, who said DACA is dead, and then blamed everyone but our, but himself, the one who killed the DACA program in September. And DACA, it's, if you don't really know it, it's Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals. And it was a program where people did come and sign up. It's only for people who arrived before 2007, before they were 16 years old, and who were younger than 31 years old in June of 2012. There are no new people in DACA, it's not adding anything. Mr. Trump, you're the one who broke the promise, our promise, to these kids who stepped up and signed up. So it's up to us to make sure that DACA is not dead. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldman Francois?
Thank you this evening. I had the opportunity to attend a Walk For Our Lives walk, and I was kind of surprised why it takes so long. It shouldn't even come to that extent for us to be, our kids to be walking for their lives. And, and the things that come to me, because I remember traveling, I was going somewhere out of town, and I went to the airport, and, and I bought a bottle of water, which cost me close, close to $5, and I was pretty pissed off about that also. And when I got to security, either I drank all the water, or I couldn't get through security. And it amazed me for someone to walk into our school with an AR-15, which is a machine gun, not even a concealed weapon, a machine gun that you could see for miles. And for that to be able to happen is just, is just, is just mobbing. I don't understand it at all, you know? You can't even walk with a bottle of water to security, but meanwhile, somebody could get in our school with a machine gun and to arm our kids. It's just, it's just unbelievable. And, and Jerry, this was a great meeting, and, and this is very close to my heart, because I'm from Haiti. A lot of my people have the same fear that you guys have also. And this, this is a great idea, and, and I remember living in Boston, there was a lot of Haitian people that was in fear, walking the street, and, and doing normal things like other people does. And nothing ever get done about it. And for Jerry to come up with that idea with just a community card, it's, I'm very supportive of that.
That came up.
And, and you guys came up, that was a great idea. I wish somebody had came up with that a long time ago. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Aldman Burr?
Thank you. Jerry, it was a great meeting, being part of that committee. We are going to look into it, you know, as fast as we can, but there's still a lot of questions we have out there. Corporation Council's going to have to come up big for us on this. And I'd also like to thank the Beer Still family, the Walk Hill Engine Number Six, on a great St. Patty's Day night, being the Park and Rec chairman. We do appreciate the check they gave us to have some people go to our sports camp, so we're now back in full swing, which are very profitable for the city. And Maria, Equilibrium Brewery, another great success, a great, great company, and you can't be in a better place. You can have a couple beers, you can go to Paramount, see a movie, and might even go to some local restaurants we won't name, but thank you. Have a good night.
New business?
Tonight, we have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Dump Stray Animal Rescue, Inc. to cover the stray feral TNR program.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to establish a capital line in the 2018 budget called the New York Rising Manhattan Brook Project.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey to authorize the treasurer to establish a new general ledger account reserve for the CPV future infrastructure repairs.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Any discussion? Aldman Kleiner?
I just want to be clear that this is a line that CPV will be paying for, for any future repairs. This is not Middletown.
Correct. Anyone else? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin to authorize the mayor to sign a county-wide mutual aid agreement between the police departments.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois to authorize the treasurer to transfer $50,000 from the sewer fund balance to cover the cost of secondary digester cleaning at the wastewater treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois, seconded by Aldman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois to authorize the treasurer to transfer $90,000 from the general fund balance to cover the cost of road salt.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Jean Francois, seconded by Aldman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to amend the zoning code for boarding houses for college students.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Does all for new business.
Aldman Massey?
All right, I have a resolution from the floor. You heard about the Equilibrium and TD Bank, now we get to do it. I have a resolution to approve the sale of the TD Bank building to Equilibrium Brewery.
Motion by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Does all for new business.
Aldman Massey?
All right, I have a resolution from the floor. You heard about the Equilibrium and TD Bank, now we get to do it. I have a resolution to approve the sale of the TD Bank building to Equilibrium Brewery.
Motion by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Audit?
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Tobin. Roll.
Graham Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Move.[1799.51]